Good evening and welcome to the Baxter City Council Meeting. Sorry for the delay. We're in uncharted water here tonight. My table looks like Mission Control in Houston here. I'm trying to get used to all of the technology, so if you'll bear with us. We'll start out, City Administrator, with roll call.
Councilmember Cross.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Lucio. Councilmember Tabit.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Sorry about that.
Administrator Shapuas here. Assistant Administrator Steele. Okay. Police Chief Exton.
Here.
Public Works Director Walter.
Here.
Finance Director Vaseenek.
Here.
And Community Development Director Josh Doty.
Here.
And City Attorney Brad Person.
Here.
Okay, looks like we're all here at this time. I'd ask you to rise if you're akin and for the pledge of the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice pro.
Thank you. Administrator, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Mayor.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is public comments. And we had asked people to send their public comments into us before 4:30 today. And I think we have some of those and we told those people that we'd read those into the record. So I would ask the city administrator to do that at this point.
Yes, as Mayor had indicated, we did receive four email communications prior to the close of business today. As we noted or indicated in our notice of the electronic meeting, we did indicate that we will be reading those emails or submissions at the public forum section of our agenda. So just bear with me, there are four emails that we did receive. And the first one came from John Ward and it states, "Mr. Mayor, City Council members and city staff, I am emailing you all to ask that my simple request be read at the Baxter City Council meeting on Tuesday, April 7, 2020. I am asking that the Forest View Drive, along with all other capital projects, be suspended due to the coronavirus crisis. Baxter residents, like the rest of the country, are going through very difficult and stressful times right now. None of us know what the future looks like. This virus crisis has taken a toll on all of us. Many have lost jobs or had their hours cut. None of us know what the future looks like. This virus crisis has taken a toll on all of us or have lost hours. Many are concerned with about the personal health and the health of loved ones. Many are following the stay-at-home order of our governor has rightfully engaged that has rightfully engaged the state of Minnesota. Many are wondering what the future will look like for their own and their family well-being. No one knows how long this is going to last, but everybody knows the effects of this crisis are going to last for a very long time. Yes, we are all in this together and we all need to follow the guidelines set up for us by the state leaders. I know Corwin County has suspended all of their capital projects and I believe Brainerd has done the same or are considering it. I ask our mayor and city councilors to also agree to suspend all capital projects for now as part of doing the right thing for all of us. We need to be in this together. Thanks. Thank you in advance for your actions and consideration of doing the right thing here, respectfully, John Ward. In the context of the recording stopping, I would pause and make sure that we can get the auto recording back going. All right. All right, the second email that we received is from Steve and Alyssa Keepers and it states, "Dear Baxter City Council, we have written in favor of this project before and with our current pandemic times felt it was necessary to restate our continued support for this project. We have lost directly affected in the first phase of the project. Economic good times and bad times come and go, but a solid community with proper investment in infrastructure will always hold up over the long run. The streets are currently in shambles and the sanitary services are long overdue. Making decisions that might not be popular to some, but are for the betterment of the community as a whole is what the council is asked to do. To date, the city has reportedly spent over a million dollars per city engineer and voted every step today to complete this project. We support your actions to do the same on the last vote. Finish this project the right way, not waste the money and time already invested. And lastly, not dump this decision in a future council's hands. Sincerely, Steve and Alyssa Keepers." The third submittal is from Jeff and Brenda Collins and it states, "This is in reference to the Forest View Sewer Project. Please consider our points listed below. One, at previous council, city council meetings, the vast majority of property owners were not in favor of bringing the water and sewer through mainly because of the excessive cost to each homeowner and lack of value increase to the home after. Some homeowners were not in a position to take on, excuse me, to take on higher monthly payments with the assessments would result in. Selling their home would likely be difficult also since the decision to assess would already have been made. The council listened at these, at the meetings and seemed to agree with the hardships being brought forward. As we understand it, there is no, there is not a groundwater contamination issue in the neighborhood, nor is the river endangered. It is, it was argued by the council that the cost of the project will increase over time, probably do, are probably true. But we do not replace our vehicle years before we need to because the cost of a new one can goes up each year. We wait until it's necessary. After all this discussion, the council voted to proceed with the project anyway. Number two, now enter the pandemic situation, which no one could have foreseen or predicted. With many persons out of work until this is over, it is time to reconsider going forward with this project. Three, our personal reasons to question the legitimacy of this project are as follows. As we have stated in a previous letter to the council, we purchased a one lot 19-plus years ago. We had built a home on the lot, one home, one lot. After several years, we had a second garage constructed in the backyard, building permit obtained, no problem, no mention of possible city sewer to come soon. Present day, once the initial project passed and our neighborhood was assessed, the lot size to build changed and the minimum size to build a house became a lot smaller. All of a sudden, our one lot for which we've been paying property taxes on for 19 years has become large, big enough to build another house on and become the equivalent of two, thus making us the owner of two lots with no difference in the amount of land. That also gave us double water, road and sewer assessment. To recover some of this expected cost, we should be able to subdivide the lot and sell the second one. Trouble is, a second house cannot be built since our back garage would be too close. Bottom line is, we all, is we will be assessed double since our single lot is now deemed dividable, but cannot have another gone because of our garages there. We ask the council to take a step back, pause to reconsider and put this costly project on the back burner for the sake of our neighborhood and all concerned property owners, Jeff and Brenda Collins." And the fourth and final email submittal comes from Eric Bolt and it states, "To whom it may concern, I am a resident in the Forest View neighborhood and live at 1227 or 278 Scenic River Drive. I am in favor of moving forward, moving ahead with the project as proposed. At some point, all of the septic systems in our area will need to be replaced and the project that is being proposed is reasonable and necessary, which will only cost more the longer it is put off. I'm in favor of the city moving ahead with the water, sewer and road project. Thank you, Eric Bolt."
Is that it, Brad?
That is all of them.
Okay, thank you. Those have become part of the record tonight and appreciate your time and efforts in corresponding with us. Driving on, we, the next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. The following items are considered non-controversial by staff and are recommended to be read and passed in one motion. Any councilperson, staff, citizen or meeting attendee can request one or more items be pulled from the consent agenda and the item will be polled and addressed immediately after the passage of the consent agenda. Otherwise, the following items will be passed in one motion. A, approve the city council work session minutes from March 17, 2020. B, approve city council minutes from March 17, 2020. C, approve city council emergency meeting minutes from March 27, 2020. D, approve the payment of bills and finance report. E, approve final acceptance of Camping World Property LLC as per the development agreement and release performance and surety bond number K15755878. F, approve drug, drug forfeiture account expenditure of $8,644 for the purchase of laptop and related expenses. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Member Cross, excuse me, second by who?
Connie.
By Councilmember Lucio for a roll call vote. City Administrator.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucio.
Yes.
Councilmember Tabit.
Yes.
And Mayor Olson.
Yes. Motion passes. You're now on eight, other business. You got a request for amendment to city code Title III, Chapter III to allow the issuance of a combination of on-sale, off-sale intoxicating liquor licenses. I'll turn it over to the city administrator.
Yes, Mayor, as you had indicated, we did receive a request from Prairie Bay. I would ask that the council take consideration of a temporary change to our liquor license. To provide more of a detail, I'll turn it over to Assistant Administrators Steele.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As discussed, Prairie Bay has requested the city amend our code to allow for the combination on-sale, off-sale intoxicating liquor license. The request from Prairie Bay comes because of the mandates imposed on restaurants by the COVID-19 pandemic. With the off-sale license, Prairie Bay would be able to sell alcohol along with carryout or curbside food purchases. Minnesota statutes allow for a city with a population of 10,000 or fewer to issue a combination on-sale, off-sale license. As mentioned, currently, city code does not allow for the issuance of a combination on-sale, off-sale license. As you recall, back in April of 2018, Prairie Bay made a similar request. And at that time, the council denied the request citing unfair competition to existing licensed liquor stores. The change would open up the combination license to all current on-sale license holders. And often, the combination license is issued in cities that are smaller in population than Baxter. While Prairie Bay is seeking a temporary variance, the city only has the authority to amend its ordinance to accommodate the request. The adoption of an ordinance amendment to allow for the combination on-sale, off-sale license would be applicable to any on-sale or off-sale intoxicating liquor license holder. Per statute, the city council has a right to establish terms of the ordinance it deems necessary to protect the public interest, including but not limited to the, to the hours of sale, days of sale, et cetera. It should be noted that any ordinance amendment is temporary in nature and the council would have to adopt another ordinance in the future to repeal this ordinance should the council move forward with it. If the council does amend the code, the current on-sale license holder or an on-sale license holder would need to submit an application and the city would follow through with the application process prior to issuing that license. Based on the nature of the circumstances that led to this request, city staff has prepared a sample ordinance amendment. Should the council consider moving forward with this request? As previously mentioned, the amendment may include terms of a license that the council deems necessary to protect the public interest. The council should know, moving forward expeditiously, the city would not be following our normal due process of posting public notice 10 days of in advance of a proposed ordinance adoption or amendment. In the RCA that was provided to the council, the current licensed liquor license fee schedule was laid out and all current on-sale license holders have paid the license fee. And if the city would to move, would move forward with this, staff is just suggesting that the new combination on-sale, off-sale license holder just pay the off-sale license fee and then that would be prorated at 2583 per month for the remainder of the license year. I got, so staff is recommending if the council elects to amend city code to allow for the combination on-sale, off-sale intoxicating liquor license, staff recommends the provisions of Minnesota statute, Chapter 348 be followed. And then also, as mentioned before, the city council could enact other restrictions such as requiring issuance of an on-sale, off-sale license to the current 12 on-sale intoxicating liquor license holders and other restrictions that the council may deem necessary. And then, I guess, council action, there's three possible actions the council can take. They can either deny Prairie Bay's request or direct staff to follow through with the normal due process or they can, the council can motion to adopt the proposed ordinance that has been included in tonight's packet.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Pretty thorough explanation of what's going on here. So just open it up for discussion and see what our thoughts are. We've had people weigh in, including the chamber. I think you got your, a copy of their thoughts. And they, of course, are asking us to, you know, to move forward with it. But I'm curious to hear what, what you, we've been here before. We had this discussion, like she said, a while back and we're at a probably a little different time right now than that. So, but anyway, I'm opening it up for your thoughts and comments. Todd.
Your Honor and Council, I'm supportive of the motion to amend our ordinance. Kelly, just as a follow-up question, was that acting expeditiously, you know, another action that the council would need to kind of do? Or that due process waiting time, is that, can you explain what we would have to do to be expeditious? I guess that would be my personal feeling on the matter.
To be expeditious, the council would just move to pass the ordinance tonight. Otherwise, to follow the due process, there would be no action by the council tonight. Staff would just provide 10-day advance notice to the public of the council's intent to adopt the ordinance. And that would be just posted on our city's website and on our front door at City Hall.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mark?
I want to say I'm, I'm in favor of it. We're in uncharted waters, like you said earlier, and whatever, whatever we can do to help our businesses will be good. And I'm assuming the state has no issue with the delivery of alcoholic beverages with a meal? And that would is, is, is the ordinance limiting all of these establishments to delivery of meals with alcohol? Or is it just delivery of alcohol?
Excuse me, the proposed ordinance would, as staff has proposed, is that the combination on-sale license would be issued to a restaurant, so they would have to provide food.
Does that answer, Mark?
So it would be an off-sale license, so someone could pull up for curbside service and pick up alcohol or potentially could be delivered, correct?
Well, it would depend upon what restrictions the council would want to put in the ordinance, how it's currently drafted. They would have to purchase food.
Okay.
Or that's what staff is recommending, but the council.
I'm fine with that.
Anybody else, Connie? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm fine with the two. In fact, my husband and I went and picked up a meal, not in Baxter, but we were actually gifted a bottle of wine just because they appreciate the business so much. And I think what we can do to help our businesses here in Baxter, we should. As long as food is ordered, along with the alcohol.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in?
I'll just add, for the sake of continuing the discussion, that I'm also in favor of, of just approving the, I think it's option three that we're kind of discussing in general as far as moving ahead expeditiously and approving sale of liquor with food for those establishments.
Okay, thank you. Got the chief here. Any concerns there, chief?
No, I don't think so. I'm just clarifying that you get it with the meal and then obviously it would, it would be in a sealed container. You know, so they wouldn't be violating any open law, open bottle laws as they leave the parking lot. Yeah, that needs to be stipulated in there. It's probably good the way it is.
Okay, thank you. I have just a couple of comments. I think that when we discussed this earlier, one of the concerns was that the competition thing, as Kelly has read too. Are we cutting into other people's livelihoods? I think the comment has been made since then is that it's unlikely that somebody's going to go to a restaurant probably to buy their wine. They're still gonna, they're still gonna do the liquor store, I suppose. And so if we're okay with that, that it's not going to create an undo, because we have both of those types of businesses in our city. And if we're okay with that, that that's not going to be a problem, then so be it. The other thing that I was concerned about was, I'd originally heard that, you know, if we pass an ordinance, it's kind of, it's kind of good to go for. For a long time, the city attorney is telling us that we can start at any time and we can end at any time. And if that's still true, then I find a little comfort in that because at the end of this scenario, if it's not working well, we may, we may want to be able to have that option to discontinue it if it works well, again, so be it. There's always the precedent scenario of by not going through the official steps, as Kelly laid out, with notifying people and giving them a chance to weigh in. Is there any foreseeable problems with that? The chamber courses is recommending and asking us to, to drive on immediately here. And so maybe, you know, maybe 12 days is too long or 10 days, whichever it was. And that just prolongs, you know, some of the agony. So I don't know about that. I just bring it up. The other thing, and I think you had, you answered it to Mark Kelly, is that these, these would have to be restaurants that have food. Is that correct? All 12 of these?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I think I've got my questions all answered. If anybody wants to add anything else, otherwise I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Zach. Any further discussion?
Just point of clarification, know that, that the request is, is a temporary and we've discussed permanent versus temporary. Before you take action, I'd just like to have it on the record is, is if you want to review this, that we specify a date that we do a review so that it's in the, in the minutes indicating that it is temporary in nature and then we reviewed at a specific time to determine if it's to be carried, continue to be carried forward or if we would take the necessary steps to rescind that out of our ordinance.
Good point.
Do we have to give it a review deadline? And if so, when is the end of the current liquor license?
Kelly?
I can answer the end of the current liquor license period is June 30th of this year. Our period, license period is run July 1 through June 30th.
My comment isn't necessarily that it be part of the, or the, the official motion, but at least that it's on the record that we intend to review this at a specific time to determine if we, we make any adjustments or changes or terminate or look to, to, to remove that from our ordinance.
So just a blanket statement that it could, could happen at any time. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I think in the context of things, as Kelly alluded to, license renewal will, will be occurring here in late May, early June to start July 1. I would indicate that if we do this, a period of time would probably be through the next liquor license just so that we can have data to be able to support one way or the other.
Okay, you have consensus on that or? All right, look for a vote. Roll call, Brad.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucio. Councilmember Lucio.
Yes.
There you go.
Councilmember Tabit.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes. Yeah, that motion carries. Okay, we're on the council comments.
I think firstly, I want to personally thank Todd DeBoer for all of his work behind the scenes and thanking him for patience with me especially and probably others as far as setting up these Zoom meetings and just appreciative of everyone's extra effort. It's apparent. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tabit.
I'll just quickly thank city staff for all the extra work that they've been doing and adjustments they've been making in this time. Especially having heard that the police department has, has to be out directly interacting with people and the PPE situation isn't as flush as we'd all like. So I appreciate the extra efforts and potential risk that they're adding to their workday. I just want to encourage everyone in the city to continue with the social distancing and I appreciate the fact that it sounds like Minnesota as a whole is doing a reasonably good job of doing that. Just want everybody to stay safe and encouraging patience on the part of everyone to continue following CDC and, and governor orders and, and requests regarding this situation.
Thank you, Zach. Councilmember Holman?
Your honor and counsel, I would concur with the council comments to this point and I just want to call out how much I'm appreciating that picture behind you. Advocacy, I think, you know, comes through and through. So thank you for that.
That was, that was probably a big mistake there. Councilmember Cross?
Yeah, I would, I would also echo those comments. I know in this time it's been interesting in the challenge and working from home and, and keeping the social distance from, from everybody you come and come reasonably close to. But I know it's a lot of work and want, definitely thank staff and, and, and everyone for doing it. And it's gonna, it's gonna make a difference and hopefully it'll, it'll be over soon and we can just look back on it as a trying time that we all got through. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I would echo everything else too, but I'd like to, in addition to that or along with that, is just thank the residents of Baxter for participating and taking it serious and doing the best you can. It's like Mark said, it's not always easy. And, but, but it is important and I appreciate the way that, the way that everybody's hunkering down and helping out. I know that we've had, we've had a few emails and a few complaints about, and the chief maybe knows more about what's not going right, but I still think it's pretty minimal of gatherings specifically in the parks, that type of a thing. But by and large, people are, are doing a good job and I just appreciate it from a city standpoint. Thanks for, thanks for doing that and continue to do that until we get a little better information about how close we are to, to all clear. Okay, city administrators ready for it? Turn your mic on. There we go. Nope.
Sorry about that. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for their patience and, and in, in this time, as we do our first electronic meeting, didn't come without any bugs that we need to work out. But again, thank you for your patience and your cooperation. Secondly, I just want to plug on the US Census. As you know, April 1st was the US Census Day. That is referred to as the day in which people are taken consideration and where they live as they fill out the census form. I am happy and proud to announce that the city of Baxter residents have done their part so far. As of April 5th, 59.8% of, of our residents had filled out their self-response forms either by going online or filling out the paper form and returning those. That is compared to 2010, our self-response rate was 79.9%. So obviously we're well on our way of achieving that again, the census. Just for comparison, the state response rate is 54.5%. So we're, we're, we're doing really good and I encourage the residents to continue to fill out those forms so that they don't have to be bothered by census workers knocking on their door later this summer. Third, I just wanted to point out, as you had heard the letter that we received from Mr. Ward did indicate that the county and the city of Brainerd had suspended or not moved forward with their capital projects. I do want to note that I did have Public Works Director Walter contact both the county engineer and Brainerd City Engineer. And both had indicated that both of their elected bodies have moved forward with several of their infrastructure projects. In regards to the city of Brainerd, several of those were accessible projects. So I just wanted to point that clarify, or point that out. It's not intended to take away what Mr. Ward was saying. I just wanted to make sure that before we adjourn that it is known that there are capital improvement projects that both of the entities referred in the letter that are moving forward. And then finally, the last one is, is that I have for the council is to talk or piggyback on what the mayor had indicated in regards to social distancing. As you know, we did close the park facilities, but not the parks themselves. We've been monitoring that. One of the things that we are running into is, is gatherings and people playing organized sports such as basketball, for the most part. We have refrained from taking action, but want council to be aware or to provide us some feedback as to consideration of removal of the backboards of the bass, on the basketball courts. So at this point, I, if there's any feedback, I greatly appreciate that. I believe Mr. Cross?
I, I think it would be really sad if we had to go to that extreme. It would take away from individuals going out there and doing something as far as practicing, but you know, people need to, people need to to individually take the responsibility of social distancing. And it's hard to legislate that and it's probably going to be even harder to enforce it. But you know, I hate to dismantle our parks just to, to try to, to enforce it on our side. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Other comments, then I am done with my report, Mayor.
I don't know if the rest of you are receiving emails or phone calls about it. I have and people are pretty adamant on both sides of the issue. One lady called in regards to very what she said, I have a 93 year old mother with me and I'm scared to death. And people are down there rubbing shoulders and doing their thing and in her opinion, in total disregard, her opinion again of, of what's going on. Other people are risking their lives to save people and then other people are pretty cavalier about it. And so it is a tough one. I've been monitoring, I belong to the Minnesota Mayor's Association. And they have a networking ability by email and it's, it's the hot topic of all the cities. So I've been monitoring that, trying to get an idea of what people are doing. And it's a mixed bag also. I would say it's tilted more to, you know, to closing them down because of the, because of the fear. And I guess, you know, I've, I've wrestled with it. I, I don't know what the right answers. If we were coming out of the, out of the cloud here in a short while, then is it, you know, is it worth the effort? If we're not, if we're in it for the long haul, then I look at us as a city. One of the comments made to me was, your leaders act like leaders and do your job. Not sure what, what that always means, but in this particular case, I, I think I get the message. And so what is the right thing to do? I was reading the Minneapolis Parks scenario and then the, I think it's the Ramsey County Sheriff got involved and, and he, his comments were that the main concern is the basketball where the contact, a lot of contact, many, many hands on the basketball constantly. And they were putting up new signs and warning parents and, excuse me, asking parents to do what Mark's talking about to talk to your kids and do, do the wise thing. Playgrounds, little kids, they are what they are. They put their hands in their mouth when they're done and, and they, they do those kinds of things. We've tried to, we've tried to rope them off, so to speak. And I know that the one call we got, the police department did go there. And the tough one, you know, that's right. The police are not their parents, but not sure that, you know, all the parents know where the kids are or maybe don't care, you know, I don't know. So I, I struggle with it. Don't know what the answer is. We did, I think some of the tennis court nets were taken down and they are probably less of a problem when you, you know, as far as distancing is concerned than the basketball hoops are. And so maybe, maybe that parts backwards too. At the same time, the weather's getting nice, kids need something to do. I don't know. It's weighed heavily on my mind and I'd be looking for guidance from the rest of you. And the staff needs to know what, what is our policy? What's going to happen? If they're going to go out there and enforce it, they need to know that we're either behind them or we're not. Part of me says if we, if we're taking this thing serious and we really think it is what it is, that we would, we would take whatever measures we thought were necessary to, to help this, this not cure, but the slow I don't know, but whatever would take to do that. I struggle with that too. And so I'm hoping that you all have the answers for me tonight and it'd make me feel better. Whatever that decision is.
Mr. Mayor, I'll pipe up here. One consideration I think we should keep in mind is, is maybe to lean on the, the police department and police chief to monitor for us if we don't make a decision on behalf of the, the city tonight. I feel like we owe it to both the citizenry and our police department not to put police in the position of having to deal with that. It, it just, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable where if we have a way that we can prevent potential confrontations that don't need to happen between our citizens and, and police officers in a public health context, it might be the harder choice that we don't want to have to make, but I'd, I'd rather see us, if it comes to the point where they say that's what they need, that we remove the backboards rather than put our police department in that position to have to have that kind of an interaction with the public. Just a starting point at least, and I would heavily lean on the police department to guide our decision that way.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I can chime in now or, or if others want to speak or they can follow up to, I guess, um, several thoughts. Um, I don't have the answer. I'm gonna throw that out right away, but I received the, the email that you're talking about. But like you, we've traveled around to all the parks on other occasions during the day and we're finding them empty or no activity quite often as well. I think the other thing too is the, the kids are, they're gonna join together. They're just, they're social by nature. And to have them at a park, I know that's not ideal right now, but it's a, it's a good positive activity. I'd hate to see what happens if we start taking away some of the positive choices. Now, was it the right choice at this particular time? Probably not. But kids don't always make the right choices all the time. So I, I struggle with that. You know, I, I mentioned in my email response to that individual you were talking about, for 25 years, I've hoped that officers would stop and get out and go play in that basketball game. You know, so we have to do things differently right now too. And we understand that and we're, we're prepared to, to do things differently. So whatever the choice is, you know, we'll, we'll be in a position to, to follow the guidance of the council, but I just, I, I can tell you one other story at Southdale Park. I don't remember sometime in the last five, six days, there was probably about a dozen cars parked in that playground section of the parking lot. And they were all parked about six, eight feet apart. And then there was a kid or two at the back of each vehicle and they were kicking a ball. Social distancing and communicating. So I think the kids are trying to, you know, I, I want you to hear those stories. So it, I don't know, that probably wasn't much help. The BCA has set up a social distancing hotline. As of the second day, they'd received over 500 calls. They had to put 10 more staff on it. That was last Friday. They are communicating out serious violations via email. I received one regarding one of our businesses that was late Friday night, Saturday, I believe. So we addressed that, but it's tough. Nobody knows what the right answer is, but I, I don't know. Hope that helped. Probably not, but.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. That email, the email he's talking about, I did, I did send it off to him and he did respond, a great response to these people. But based on that, I took it to heart and so I am retired. And so for the next two days, I did drive around to our parks. And I got to O'Kee Park. There was not a soul, not one person. Went to Berrywood. There was nobody there. Now, this is during the day and I realized that maybe it's the evening time where, where they come out. But I, I really, I really couldn't find it either. And then I went through Berrywood last night again, or yesterday afternoon, and there was one father pitching to his daughter softball in the field. Perfectly, perfectly fine. You know, that's kind of the way that should be too. So my comment to the chief too and to Brad was that don't want to do a knee jerk reaction to any of this. At the same time, want to be responsible too. So maybe what Councilmember Tabit is saying is they're out to go. We let it go and we let the police chief and his officers fill us in on, on if it gets better or worse or what we should do. And, you know, we can, we can always revisit it. Connie?
Yeah, I would feel good about that too. And I support what Mark said earlier that it would be just a sad day if we had to go around and take down all of the backboards and hoops when my whole career has just been encouraging families and kids to get out. And honestly, I've done a lot of walking and biking around and I've seen plenty of activity with basketball hoops in the driveways, but I haven't seen anything at the park, just a few kids running around, like you said, and pitching. So I would support, I think, what Zach said as far as leaning on the police department. And again, echoing what Mark said, I would, I would really like to wait it out before we take the step of having to remove things.
Okay, anybody else?
Same. I, I agree with the line of thought here.
Okay. So by consensus, I guess we, we agreed to monitor it, let it go for now. And if the chief has any more information that he feels we should need, we will, we'll be meeting again in a couple of weeks, I guess. So I just wanted us to be on the same page so that the staff knows how to answer those phone calls and how to, how to deal with those requests or comments that come in. So I think you've got your answer there, Brad?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, we'll move along then. Where were we?
The city attorney's report.
Okay, everybody got a chance to talk. That's what I want. Now we're on the city attorney.
Looking for a motion. There's two items for close session on the agenda. They're looking for a motion to go into closed.
Okay, we got a couple of things we need to discuss. We'll be looking for a motion to go into close. If you are, and so inclined, we will be coming back into open session when that's done. I can't guarantee when that will be, but we will be coming back. So motion?
Move into closed.
Second by Mark? Roll call?
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Licio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tabit?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes. So we will step into a closed session. Again, we will come back out at some point in time later. Thank you for, if you've been listening and watching, thank you for your interest and involvement.
Okay, I think we're good.
That were good. Need to make, have a motion made to come out of closed session?
Come out of closed session?
Motion by Councilmember Cross. Second by Councilmember Licio.
Well, roll call vote. So motion to, or come out of closed session, although, or not all those in favor, apologize. Roll call vote, Councilmember Cross?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Licio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tabit?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Okay, we are back into open session. If you're still listening, we will. Ask County City Attorney to weigh in.
Yes, after a discussion on quite a few items enclosed, the first motion. Based on consensus, I think there's. We we the council would like to approve the Shell and Assessment Agreement. Looking for a motion to confirm what I just said.
Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Councilmember. Roll call?
Cross?
Aye.
Holman?
Yes.
Licio?
Aye.
Tabit?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes. Second item?
We reviewed a counter offer on the Baxter Fairview property for a proposed easement agreement and assessment agreement. Looking for a motion to approve the counter offer.
So moved.
Motion by Cross? Second. Second by Holman. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Cross?
Aye.
Holman?
Yes.
Licio?
Aye.
Tabit?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item?
You heard from our consultant engineer that we need to acquire a small little chunk of land on two different parcels along Excelsior Drive. Looking for a motion to authorize staff to make that offer.
So moved.
Motion by Cross?
Second.
Second by Licio. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Cross?
Aye.
Holman?
Yes.
Licio?
Aye.
Tabit?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item?
The next one was a pretty lengthy agreement with Hangle regarding a an assessment agreement and easement agreement. Looking for a motion to approve that agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Cross?
Second.
Second by Holman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Roll call. Cross?
Aye.
Holman?
Yes.
Licio?
Aye.
Tabit?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes. Motion passes?
The last one on the the Mir property. There was a counter offer to our latest offer regarding assessments. Looking for a motion to reject that counter offer and maintain our last offer made by the city.
Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Cross?
Second.
Second by Holman. All in favor, roll call?
Cross?
Aye.
Holman?
Yes.
Licio?
Aye.
Tabit? Tabit?
No.
Olson?
No. Motion, motion carries. Is that the last one or is there more?
That was all.
Okay, any last instructions or a city administrator?
There are none. Again, I appreciate everybody's patience and cooperation as we get through this first, as we got through this first one.
Thanks, Council.
We'll continue to improve it, so.
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Cross?
Second.
Second by Licio. All in favor? Roll call?
Aye.
Cross?
Aye.
Holman? Yes. Licio?
Aye.
Tabit? Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, ma'am.
Have a good evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you.